This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for May 13th, 2025 at 6:05. If we could start by standing and saying the Pledge of Legions, please.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. We have our quorum tonight. Dan can't be here tonight, but we have our quorum, so we will try to proceed with the agenda. Not a terribly complicated agenda, so I'm thinking we can get through it relatively efficiently tonight. So, do we have anybody for citizen speak in the audience? Something else? Okay. All right, if not, let's move ahead to some appointments. We have-
Move without objection to dual appointments of William Walden and Mary Ann-
Karasco.
Karasco. Both Board of Registers, reappointment, three-year apiece, each to expire June 30th, 2028.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes for both of those people. And there's reappointment to the Board of Registars. Very good. All right, let's go to town reports. Scott, would you like to go into your TA report for us?
So Mark, we'll probably talk about it a little bit later, but we had a site visit from MS DOT Linda Walsh, who's a project manager. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it a few months ago due to a broken foot, so she was able to come out yesterday just to look at the Safe Roots to School project, but also more importantly, the Greenway project. We're gonna have to be talking about that in a little while. There are some issues with how DOT wants to end the temporary Phase 1, whether or not it should be at East Street or if it's going to continue to the original proposed right by Sheldon's Ice Cream. How that's going to happen. They want some parking. There's some concerns about conservation land, whether or not they can use federal funds on certain types of roads and making sure they're ADA accessible. Tyne Bond's done a really good job in presenting some different options for that, at least three options to move forward with. But again, the problem's also funding and the use of federal funds for that. So, we are going to touch base with Alex from Tyne Bond, probably next day or two, just get another recap on that and get another reading and see how we're gonna move forward with that.
Well, certainly all the Mass Trails money that we've gotten from the beginning has taken us all the way to Sheldon, so that's been the plan all along, so.
Really into MS DOT at this point. Everything from curb cuts to sidewalk repair. There's a lot of different cooks in the kitchen at MS DOT, so. It's gonna be a difficult project, but I think that, I think it's doable.
And additional information, I'm sure if you're gonna talk about it later or now? We will have that. Oh yeah, we have it on the agenda as an update. Mark, thanks.
Other than that, the Safe Roots to School tour was really good. Certain Select Board members almost wiped us out.
Sorry, what?
Yeah, well, you almost-
Was it me?
DOT team?
No, he gave me a heart attack when you honked the horn.
Oh, I didn't honk, but I did yell. As if he was standing in the middle of the street, which he was not. It was, well, it was an orderly procession.
Very good. So they had a good crowd out from DOT or just a couple of-
No, it was just, it was Mark, myself, Randall, and two people from DOT and a few people from Tyne Bond, so. This is much, much smaller.
Yeah, no, usually when they've come, they've had like 10 or 12 people from DOT in all their orange vests, so you can't miss them.
That's it.
So that's gonna be a-
So that's proceeding? I mean, they're moving along with that?
Yeah, there's gonna be some right away issues, but especially with the post office. That's always gonna be a challenge, but other than that, I don't think it's anything that they haven't come across in the past. We're gonna have the kickoff meeting for some departments for our Permit Link Online permitting system this Thursday. Scott from Permit Link's coming in to talk to a few select departments to start working with the billing departments, getting their login all set up, and then we're gonna slowly spread out from there and take each department individually. But we wanted to try to get everyone into the system, familiarize them with it and start at least with the building permit side of it, so.
Okay.
Kickoff, I'm sorry, town election is May 20th, next Tuesday. Early voting has started. Water Commission meeting is tomorrow. I'm gonna stop by. I know that the Glinda Road property's been a pretty hot topic internally, at least. I'm gonna talk to them and see what their interest is in moving forward with the property. Board of Health is moving forward in the hiring process for a new health agent. They've identified a candidate. A conditional offer's been extended. We're doing background checks now, so hopefully we'll have an announcement soon. And looks like the next Zero College Highway land use session will be Saturday, May 31st, at Norris School, 10 to 12.
Okay.
Scott, get some stuff out soon.
So this is-
Scott, can you just turn the microphone towards you? I can't hear you at home.
Sorry.
Yeah, so next Saturday, not next Saturday, Saturday, May 31st at Norris will be the next land use planning or public session from 10 to noon. Okay, so we'll get that out on the website and let people know and get that publicized a little bit as well?
Yep, we're just getting, waiting for some posters from PVPC.
Okay.
It's the 31st.
31st, yeah.
Saturday morning.
Yeah, and if, I don't know if we have already, I'm assuming we have already the results of the survey that people-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we ought to put that up on the, on the website too, if we've got the results that we can share on that. That would be good.
I thought it was. I thought it was.
Last I looked, it hadn't been, but I don't know. Could be. Could be. Good. All right, anybody have any comments, questions on this?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, anybody have any reports from your committees at all? John, we kind of know where you've been.
Yeah, the only committee, I mean, the only meeting that I've had in the past two weeks other than Select Board is the annual town meeting, which we're gonna talk about later, right? So, I don't-
Yeah.
I mean, how do you take-
Anything else? Okay.
Housing Authority met and they're gonna renew their contact or have renewed their contact with Wayfinders in anticipation of the public meeting on 31st, and they're gonna try and refine what they've heard from the community into something that both Wayfinders can respond to, and then we can feed into the various kinds of municipal impact questions that have been raised. If there's many units, how many schoolchildren, how much traffic, and those sorts of things.
Those kinds of things.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's really gelling as they're trying to, you know, as the town's primary representatives on this bold initiative get comfortable with what they're proposing. And they'll be presenting that or interacting with that on 31st.
Great, okay. Is there any, any progress you know about on the land down on College Highway down across from the golf course, the land that they bought that they were working on?
Yeah, yeah, I mean-
Getting RFP, because I think Bradley's gotta get involved in putting the RFP together with them, so I assume, I'm hoping they're liaising and talking with Bradley if they have any-
I saw an email to that effect, so, yeah.
Okay, perfect, okay. Good. Dan's not here. On my end, nothing new. No, no new grant committee work at this point in time yet, and then we will be having a Bylaws Committee meeting to go over the draft of, a very early draft of the scenic roads bylaw that we're working on.
Reach out to me. I wanna make a recommendation.
Sure, okay. I'll let you know. We had a meeting scheduled, then I had to change it, so it'll probably be in another week or 10 days. I'll get it posted out soon. Okay, so that's about it for other committee reports. So, let's go into new business, and let's just talk a little bit, first thing, first on our minds, I guess, the first thing we all came out of. Annual Town Meeting, just a little bit of a recap in terms of what we all thought. It was a long meeting, but we got through it in one night, so thanks, Robert, for shepherding us through. I'm glad we didn't have to come back again, but three hours was, was long, but you know, we had a number of people. We had 220 people, I believe, Lucy said, so that was very good turnout. So, I was pleased with that. But anybody have any thoughts, comments, things that you thought went well, things that, you know, we might think about doing differently, or anything that crosses your mind, or feedback that maybe you've heard from-
No, I thought the, it didn't really seem like it was three hours. It seemed like it was quicker than that, but the, we got through all the articles. There was a lot of change. Different views or different presentations, I guess, than what traditionally was done, which is good. Change is always good, nothing to be feared, but I think we, if we were able, we are able to capture it because it's on video. It might be worth an exercise, whether it's Judy or somebody, to go back through and, like, the routine questions that are always there, and I'm thinking about the stabilization votes. We get asked the same questions every year. What's the balance?
Yeah.
And why are we doing this percentage? So, we, we should be able to put that into the summaries, the balance as of whatever date it was, and have the token 35, 30, or 10 sitting there for each one of those questions, and then if we, when we want to do a placeholder like we did, we just put XX period XX. So, everybody knows it's gonna be a number that's gonna be announced, and we don't have to field the question, well, why'd the number change?
Right, that's a good point.
We still would have had to do that because we decided to take the other 25 and allocate all that in, but I think those are little things that we could do to just improve the flow. If, the question's gonna come up each time anyways, if there's a way for us to put it into the summary, it's there, as an example of little things.
Those are good examples, actually, because I think we do have those questions, you're right, often, oftentimes. And we had, even though we had, in our pre-meeting before the town meeting, we'd had our Select Board meeting, and we had determined those, those amounts for those free cash articles, and we, you know, we read them that way into, you know, in the meeting, but it wasn't clear to the voters, I think, why, why things were changing, so. Good comment, yeah.
And then the only other, not necessarily the only other thing, but suggestion or edit that I would do is if we have multiple, like, we did this time, we had two debt authorizations, and the questions were back to back. So, the counters were working on the first question and the very next que, and we, you know, if we had spread that out so that we, in theory, because, well, we could need a counter on every single question, but in theory, if we had had a debt issue, you know, for the water department, and then put in maybe the votes on the stabilization money, and then bring the next debt issue, and to give the counters enough time to do that, report the number, then we move to the next one, you know, but-
Yeah, I think, I think flow is the ultimate goal.
And the budget question should always be last. Everybody leaves after that one.
Everybody sit there for three hours. Well, we did see some people leave, not immediately, but some people did fade out after the first hour, so, for sure, but understandable, yeah. Steven, anything? Just thoughts?
I've certainly seen longer town meetings, less successful town meetings. You know, I think that we came out with a good result for the town. The process was admittedly messy, and that's what you're asking about. I remain frustrated that we're behind the eight ball on municipal and school finances, audits, certification of free cash, so it's trying to develop a budget in quicksand, and that's unfair to everyone, really.
Sure.
So, with our new town administrator leading the finance team towards better integration and how to deal with the school system, which is a bit of a rogue actor.
Well, I think it has been, but I think in all fairness, they've done a lot this past year to-
Yes.
Try to right the ship and make a lot of corrections. I mean, we've, we've been kind of stymied, I guess, because of overdue balances and things that weren't closed-out property, and we've still got a few things that still need closing out. I think there's still odds and ends to do, but I think we made big headway on that. Certainly, my goal is to try and figure out how we can get ourselves, I know Scott is great at putting schedules together, and we pretty much adhered to the budget book. We tried very well on that, I think, but I really want to see us, you know, with the finance team and the accountant, get our free cash done when we're supposed to get it done in the fall and not be right before a town meeting all the time. This is, this is just not-
Let me go back into the school piece, because although I'm a newcomer, this is my first term on the board, I have seen that with the new staff at the regional school district, there's better responsiveness, but there's a huge catch-up.
Yeah.
And so, I don't want to denigrate the current staff, but we're still in the mess, and it's gonna take a whole next year to get out of it.
Yeah, and I would go, I brought this up last year, and we're too far behind the eight ball, but I'd really like to see July 1st, you know, the DLS or DOR prints out that 12-month calendar, and I, and I really think the Select Board should put it on their agenda, keep it as an open item. Every month, all right, what's supposed to be due now? What's coming up? Are we gonna make this deadline or not? Where are we? So, at least we can keep it front and center, and then I'd like to see finance not necessarily get more actively involved, but if, utilize them more than just, oh, it's budget time, let's have these hearings.
Just bring in a budget time, but I think quarterly meetings, as we've been talking about with, with the finance team in general, and, and, I'm sorry, the finance committee, finance committee and the finance team here at Town Hall is what I'm trying to say.
Because then we could use, you could utilize that calendar for the finance team-
Right.
Both here and on the school side, which at least for next year, will probably be my last year's chair, but we can apply pressure on both ends and use it in their evaluations.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, this is what the state says, and-
Yeah, well, and I think also working together earlier with the school to say, look, this is what we're, we're facing, you know, we've got some unknown thing that we're facing right now, for example, and therefore, if you need to, you know, do adjustments, you know, we need to stay within X percentage or something, or try to, because I think that's our challenge, is, you know, not, not giving some parameters perhaps, although it may not have helped this year, given the situation that they found themselves in too. But as they're coming out of the, all the work that they're doing, that may be something we can aim for in the, in the future to do that. I think, anything else? Just-
I don't know how many times we all read through the warrant, and we missed some obvious things.
Yeah.
And apologies to all of those watching. Apologies to our moderator, who had guided us through all these missteps, but we got there, you know. So, it was messy, but thank you all for being, you know-
Yeah, no, I think it was a collaborative effort, no matter what. I think it was a collaborative-
Flexible, agile.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I mean, yes, I think, you know, messy to a certain extent, but I think, you know, we did have enough collaboration and discussion to, to try and correct things as, as we were going, and it, and it doesn't, I don't know if it would convince anybody, but I would say that it doesn't reflect a lack of review and looking through documents and trying to proofread and so forth. We, we've all done that, and Scott, I think you made a requirement of your various department staff and/or committee chairs that had an article. They were responsible for proofreading it too, for, for your sake, so that, you know, you were delegating that to them, which I think is a great, great thing to do as well. So, I will say just a couple of things that came to my mind. I jotted down some notes. First of all, I think it's the first town meeting I've been at, whether special or town meeting, annual town meeting, in the last six years, where every department and/or committee that had something on the warrant was represented in person. I have never, I don't believe, been at a town meeting where everybody was present and were able to stand up and speak for themselves on their article, and they all did a great job. So, kudos to everybody from the town departments, chairs and/or their delegates, and same with committee chairs that had articles. That was, I think, really, really important for the townspeople to see who's involved. It's not just Select Board or somebody else or Scott popping up and down to answer every question. It really is a, a shared experience, and I really, I felt that for the first time, I think, on my time here on Select Board. We had a lot of new, new things, and a lot of that credit goes to Scott and his initiative. The budget book, I think, I don't know how many people have had a real chance to look at it yet, but we'll be using that going forward. I mean, that's our basic model. I think there's more that Scott would have wanted to get done to illustrate that better, maybe with charts and graphs and things, so it's not so much, you know, so much information that's really hard to kind of sift through. But I think that's always a good base, and we'll have an improvement, I think, as we go forward. An awful lot of effort went into making that the most transparent budget I think we have ever had and posted up on our website, so if people haven't had a chance to look at it yet, it's there, and it will stay there. Probably a couple of major initiatives, I think, too, were just the effort to clean up some of the stuff on the books. I mean, some of these accounts that we, you know, rescinded the balances of that had been voted at previous town meetings over the last four or five years, that either never got fully spent, or a couple of cases where they didn't end up getting needed at all. I think that effort between you and Bradley to, to clean up the books is commendable, and I think that's probably still an ongoing effort, and I think that's something that is, is useful to do, because that helps us free up some money that can come back into the coffers, obviously, rather than just sitting in some line item out there. Our capital funds are not terribly huge, but in spite of that, we did get nine small size capital items in there, including some key things, especially for the police department, they were looking for, and that's also very good. I think other new things, obviously, working with John's kind of urging, this establishing of the Board of Commissioners to manage and look at our trust funds and how those are invested. I mean, that's, that's gonna be huge, I think, going forward, so we can do a better job of that.
Not only investing them responsibly, but enjoying the full appropriate use of them.
Correct.
Because I think they've just been put on a shelf.
Yeah, they've kind of been sitting there, and in some cases, many of the committees that are in charge of them, so to speak, or that they're allocated to, are not really clear what they can be used for. So, there, there's a bit more forensic work perhaps to do on our case to get down to the bottom of what some of those can be used for, but I think that's a good, good step forward, and so, more, more work to be done on that. Our ability to keep on going with actually acquiring, hopefully, and installing the long overdue heating system at the highway garage will be a huge timely effort for this, for this winter, and also for the Water Commission to be able to continue to replace their undersized water mains on College Highway. Again, much appreciate the voters understanding those issues and voting for those. I think in general, I felt we had a lot of very, very good questions from the audience. People were, were trying to understand, especially the, I think the budget was our thorniest issue, but people were asking good questions. They were really, really trying to understand, and I think, for the most part, we were trying to give very clear answers as best we could, and I appreciate Robert letting us have a recess for a few minutes to kind of reconnoiter and figure out how to best present it. And I think, you know, it was a different way too for us, so I think we were a little bit maybe gun-shy in terms of how to, how to divide the question, and especially having the two actions within one article was a, that was a tough one, I think, for myself as well as others, I think, to get our heads around, but I think people in the audience did a good job also just coming up and keeping asking questions to, to clarify that, and I think people finally understood that as, as it was when we finally got to looking at the, the second part, the override budget. There was not even a need for counters. It was pretty, pretty good. But anyway, so I think that, you know, dividing the question is, is a challenge, but I think that was the, you know, the newness of, of how we presented that budget. So, my thought would be that, to the extent that we had four or five kind of new ways of doing things that are just different for the voters, that we might have done better by having like a little cheat sheet or something that we could have done out on webpages or on the town Facebook page or somewhere, just to say, hey, look, you're gonna see a budget this year. It's gonna look like this, and this is what it means, or you're gonna see this kind of an article that's gonna be something that looks like this. And just to, just to better prepare the voters, I think, for some change, because change is always a tough one, I think, and maybe some advance discussion, if you will, I guess, about what that was really gonna look like to them. We could have perhaps figured out a way to do that more so, knowing that probably not very many people actually watch Select Board meetings, and they find out their news and, and stuff other times, other ways, so I think we can improve upon that, too. And then, proofreading, you know, we, we did make several changes we knew about ahead of time. As you mentioned, the placeholders, John, were, were ones that we knew we had to change, and, but just simply putting in XXs is probably not a bad idea, if we can do that, and then put in the real number when we get on the floor. And in spite of that, there were a couple of simple ones. I know I looked at the school van one probably five times, and I know it was 98, and then I kept seeing 98, 98, and there it was, 89, right in front of me, and I just didn't see it. So, there, there are times where you just, you, you look at it so much that you don't, you don't see it. So, not trying to make excuses, just saying that we will do better. We've got lots of eyes, and, and we will make better use of timing and, and getting that done. So, hopefully, that will improve us going forward. So, that's all my thoughts, I think, on that, but I think we had a-
Wow, very comprehensive.
You know, good-
But in response to that, I want to recognize a couple of pieces of the new pro, well, new and old process. Town Administrator made himself available to walk through warrant articles with anyone who showed up on Facebook Live. Town Moderator and Assistant Moderator did their dog and pony show for many hours, available on cable television.
Excruciatingly difficult set of bylaws, especially the zoning bylaws, word for word.
Excruciating, but it was enough exposure to generate the 220 people at town meeting. For a town this size, I think that that's something that we should recognize and appreciate. And so, that's in response to the public information. But what came back was rather incredible media coverage, which I thought was quite fair and balanced, at least what I heard on WAMC, and it was, I don't know, two, three minutes longer-
Okay.
With quotes because the meeting was recorded. Yeah, I, I thought that that was excellent, represented our town in a good way, given that we were doing something new and we struggled a bit. I thought that they were very fair and balanced, and I appreciate the coverage.
That's great, and I think, I believe our Gazette reporter was in the audience, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I spoke to her afterwards.
So, that was helpful too, to have the Gazette reporter there as well.
Representative Pease was-
Yes, also?
Present for, while we're recognizing people.
Yes, indeed, yeah, and he sat through just about all of it, as far as I know.
He tried to help out in a couple of places.
He was there for quite a while, yeah, for sure.
Chris?
Yeah, yes, Robert. Yeah. I wasn't gonna forget you.
Harvard Florida College Highway Town Moderator. Transitions are rough. We had a great meeting. We legislated. There was amazing interaction, teamwork. People really cared. We had a big rock to push up the mountain because we had a special town meeting about a month or so ago. We had more information, more data than we ever presented at a town meeting. We had a 46-page warrant, and plus the great job Scott did with the book on the budget, and I was really proud of the participation, and really a lot of checks and balances. I would take our legislature, or that one on the hill in Boston, under the gold dome any day. So, it really worked, and I believe we may have been spoiled all these years. We never had a budget fail, of course, before, but democracy is meant to be messy, and it's meant not to be rubber stamped, and I, I think everybody pitched in, and I thank Brian Riley from KP Law. He was very helpful at, at the clutch there. So, yeah, thank you. It was a privilege. Cheers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So, let's move on to the next couple of items here. So, we have the purchase and sale for Woolcott Road. This was one of the Mountain Waters projects that we actually had signed in April, and this is just notification. We had signed it, and apparently we need to re-sign it because it didn't arrive somewhere.
Yeah, so we did overnight it for early delivery for the next day, but unfortunately didn't make it, so Katie had to just push back the closing dates, but she does need a re-execution of the documents.
Okay, so this will just be a re-signing. Do we need to, we don't need to revote it? We've already-
I move that we revote the-
Okay, we can, I mean, certainly can.
Purchase the Woolcott Road property with a new closing date and sign the document tonight.
Okay, so this would be signing still the, the purchase and sale, correct? Isn't it? Yeah, okay.
Second?
All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, we will do that. So, we will have the original in your package somewhere. We'll sign them before we leave tonight, so thank you. And that will get them a new closing date, and that can hopefully, I'm sure you sent it by express mail last time, so I'm not sure where it all fell apart, but yeah, okay. We will keep it, keep it going. Thank you. All right. Next one, the MOU for the Mass Save Municipal Energy Manager Grant, and I'm really gonna turn that one over to you, Scott. Yeah, I know, you've been working on this one. no, you've been working on this one with our neighbors in West Hampton, I believe.
Yep. So Doug Fenn, the town administrator in West Hampton, has done a really great job with this. He got the grant approved by Eversource and the Mass Energy. This is the first step in getting the position. It's an MOU between the three communities that are participating, Southampton, West Hampton, and Williamsburg. It's primarily set towards the schools right now, especially being in Hampshire Regional. I think that's probably the biggest energy consumption building out of all the towns. So eventually, it will come down to their elementary schools, NOR schools, things like that. And the hope is to even expand it to municipal buildings eventually. But the primary focus is going to be on school buildings for first. It's a three-year contract. It's 100% paid by Eversource salaries and the benefits. And there's a graph on things that you can and can't pay for out of it. So after the MOU is signed, we have to get some further details worked out between the towns. We have to do a job description and figure out who's actually going to manage the person. My vote is for West Hampton, since Hampshire is in there. But yeah, so this is really just for Eversource to say that all the communities agree and buy into it.
Is this a new program from Eversource? I mean, I don't think we've ever heard about this before. How has this surfaced, do you know? I mean-
It falls under the green energy.
Oh, does it? Okay.
So Mass Save is not a new program at all, but it's been very much directed or promoted towards residential customers.
Right.
Is this the way in for municipalities and regional school systems, is to have a contract advisor rather than a company come in, do an audit of your house?
It can be. It's just a matter of funding. And again, because of this regional school system, you know, who's going to pay for it? And if there's grants available-
Needs to be looked at. And if this is the mechanism, let's go.
I've seen, I've been part of municipalities where it was an actual paid position before all these grants became available 15, 20 years ago.
Yeah.
And it has some pretty significant savings to the schools.
So just point of clarity, or protest, I don't know which. It's not Eversource that's paying. It's all the ratepayers that pay into Mass Save.
They'll take credit for it, though.
Pardon me?
They'll take credit for it, though.
They'll take credit for it.
They're a wonderful company. They deliver the goods, but it's our money to begin with.
That little fee that you see on your bills.
Which little fee?
Exactly, yeah, the little bit. Yeah. So this is actually a grant that West Hampton has received. Is that correct? Yeah. So that's already there. So this is really moving forward with an MOU, and then eventually a job description for this energy manager that will help all three towns look at this.
Ironing process is going to, there's some more work to do, but this is the first step now that the grant's been approved.
Okay, so we would need a vote to approve our joining onto this MOU, I gather?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Would someone like to-
Yeah, I'll make the motion, vote to do that. We didn't already do that? Or maybe that was at the school committee level?
No, we were just talking about, we had heard that this was happening, but they hadn't, I don't think we had had the, we definitely didn't have the MOU before. I'm sure that-
Maybe we did on the school side. I just remembered this whole conversation. But I'll make the motion to approve it and authorize the chair to sign off on the MOU.
Second?
All right, all right. No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks very much. We will take care of this, then. Right. Next up, land use planning updates.
So the next public meeting, we have scheduled for May 31st, 10 to 12 at NOR School. We wanted to, some of the things got a little bit delayed. We were hoping to do it a little bit earlier. But with the override vote, the budget, town meeting, the municipal election coming up, we just, it would have gotten lost and everything. So this is really the only window that we're going to have before the summertime, when we lose people's interests. Obviously, we can do next, the holiday coming up, so that weekend was kind of ruled out. So we're going to do some advertising in the next day or two. PVPC is going to give us some posters and some cards and social media. We're going to try to lure as many people as possible and try to break the attendance from the first one.
Will it be similar in terms of, you know, multi, you know, mini-group, kind of rotate around to different things? Or will it be more of a presentation?
I think it'll be more of a presentation. I'm not sure exactly what DNF is going to, I think they're working on the programming now. But they do, they are working on more, you know, firm things that they can actually start present and get some input on.
Okay. Yeah, Stephen?
Well, the piece that I wanted to share and continue to recruit is that Dodson, Flinker, and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission have suggested that it would be really helpful to have the town committees or interest groups help present or facilitate the discussion around those interests. So whether it's conservation, senior center, public safety, or affordable housing, or greenway access, that there'd be participation. So I am pleased that Conservation Greenway has stepped up, and they've designated people that will participate in the design of this.
Now, I'm not sure what's happened on the other two committees. We haven't had that, they haven't met in a while, and we haven't had that discussion. But I know the last meeting of the Senior Center Building Committee, they were, I think, somewhat concerned that there had been such an accent on housing during the other public forum, that they were not clear where Senior Center was going to be fitting in.
This is the opportunity.
And they were hoping, though, they were requesting, I would say, that there might be a meeting with either PVPC or Dodson and Flinker, and the both building committees, before a public forum, to have input, to understand better what's going on. So I don't-
Yeah, that's the internal next step, absolutely.
Other internal meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, there's some personnel issues that are putting it on pause for the moment, but we have to plan it. And we have to integrate people who have not necessarily envisioned themselves as presenters or facilitators.
Yeah, because they've definitely, to my knowledge, they've not talked with, I mean, I haven't talked to the representatives-
They have met since this evolved.
-that are on there. But I guess what I'm thinking, Stephen, is that not just the couple of people from each committee that are the representatives to the internal group, but I think there was a request for the entire committees, those two committees, to sit down and meet directly.
That would be ideal. If you could make that happen, that would be great.
If as many that could be there to understand better themselves what's going on, so they could have a voice. But anyway, we can talk about that later on.
Some staff are on paternity leave or international travel, and I don't know where it's all at, but we're going to-
Well, we'll see if we have time to call-
The idea is to more tightly integrate those interests. So that's our goal. So don't anybody be shy, or wait necessarily for an invitation, but start talking.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I'll double check.
There will be an invitation, of course.
I think the Senior Center Building Committee was going to meet the 22nd, if I'm not mistaken. But Public Safety normally meets on a Monday, and that Monday is going to be Memorial Day. So they would not meet until after this public meeting on the 31st. So if there was a meeting, we could, you know, we could have a few people that might be available to come. That might be helpful.
If you could make that happen, that would be huge.
Okay, we'll see what we can do. I'll talk to you and Scott about it and see what works in the two chairs. Okay. Good. All right, so otherwise, May 31st at NOR School at 10 o'clock, to get the latest input on the land use planning. Very good.
Come and bring your voice. The world of possibilities is going to be reduced based on input from all the stakeholders, but it is not a fate complete. It is not predestined. It's an interplay between all these different interests, so that they create more than the, some of the parts, that there's synergy, that there's community created. So as much as each defined interest needs to be clear about what they need, there's so much opportunity to get more by intelligent partnering.
Great, okay. We'll see what we can do. All right, next agenda item, Greenway update. Scott, you mentioned it a little bit. I know, Mark, you have anything to share with us? Or, yeah, come on up. I know you mentioned having the walkthrough with DOT, so that's good that they've at least seen things firsthand, or at least the project manager has seen things firsthand.
Mark Cassis, 19th Row, member of Greenway Committee. There was, a week ago Monday, a meeting with Mass DOT to talk about the logical ending of the south end of the trail, which I was not present at that, but I sent information to people. And then yesterday, there was Linda Walsh, who is the coordinator for the Mass DOT, came out for a visit because she couldn't make the original one. And there's things that came up there I just wanted to share with the things. And some, to me, was a bit frustrating, and partially in terms of just lack of answers. It's sort of like, ask a lot of questions, do this work. So at the pre-25% meeting, they raised, one of the persons in Mass DOT raised the question of where is the logical ending to the road, and was concerned it should end at East Street rather than-
Can I just check, is that green light on? Are you on?
The green light is on. Can you hear me?
It gets turned off.
And so there's been a number of communications going on about how to convince them that we can make a logical terminus around Sheldon's. There's three plans that were the most recent presented, and they incorporate the current pass-through for the driveway for Glen West's business as a potential access route for parking. And one of them has no parking. My sense from Linda Walsh is she was sort of saying if there's no parking, it's not a logical terminus, and we're not going to buy that one. There's other ways to potentially approach that. Any of the other parking options get confusing. One is, we're not sure if the state would grant another exit onto Route 10 there. It's being asked by Alex at the request after that last meeting, but the feeling is it's unlikely because there's so much going on. And the other is, there may be major issues related to, even though it's a brief crossing of conservation land, part of the land that was given by Stephen Howland to the town, it's like a, between a two and a seven-foot strip of land there that's quote "conservation land." And they were pushing that we needed to go through Chapter 97 reversal process to do that, which is legally expensive and time-consuming. And one of the issues, if we just use the existing passage across and just tie parking there, does that, do we need to do anything there? But the big thing is, she was saying, we probably need a politi, a, I'm sorry, an attorney to look at this question of what are the legal issues related to access through that conservation property, which is, again, a budget issue for the Select Board.
Did they offer an attorney that's actually knowledgeable about Article 97?
They specifically said you should go through town attorney. That's, the town should.
Well, there's my question.
Yes.
Is there an attorney who's actually knowledgeable about Article 97 and the recently passed state law that governs this process?
Don't know. I mean, KP Law's got quite a big bench of people, so we can certainly find out.
Well, it is a specific qualification that we need to ensure. It's not just the person on the answer desk that day.
There's also an issue of, can we use the existing road without having to go through Chapters 97? Because I think that was pre-existing to the time the town had purchased the parcel and was being used. So that's a question, also a legal question.
And also, I would ask, weighing of cost and benefit, no net loss of conservation value is what I would argue for. And the use, the conservation value and the public use value will be increased. This is not a conversion for a parking lot for an A&amp;W, or conversion to a school. This is a different sort of conservation use that has the ability to also address an incredible invasive species problem, and confused circulation and drainage. And it would be entirely net positive to the environment and the conservation values. So we have a very difficult technical issue, because I'll defend Article 97 protections to my dying day. But reasonably applied, we can end up with a conservation benefit here, not a detriment.
Yeah. Well, and especially because the, I mean, the main, it's not like it's going anywhere near the, well, is near, but it's not going through the protected forestry land at all.
It's a little strip of-
It's this little strip of land that borders Brickyard Road, the way I see this, right?
It's all to start.
It's disturbed between the road and the rail bed. And it's literally, widest is seven feet, and most of it's like four feet or three feet.
Okay, all right. Well, obviously, work to be done.
Again, whether we can, it may be a simple answer. They say actually the existing roadway you can use. That may be the simplest answer. But I think it's a legal response. And I think Mass DOT was hoping that would be cleaned up before it moved to the next phase.
I'm glad they're attentive to Article 97 issues.
They did, Alex also said that they were asking for information about Title V records for the Glen West property, to make sure that there was not going to be problems that arise with any work that gets done there. And I can talk to you about that. So. And they are going to find out if they can get a new cutoff of Route 10, but they'll start that process.
Okay, yeah. And obviously, the idea with parking was that it would be separate from Sheldon's. We would not be using Sheldon's parking, because we don't want to interfere with their business, right? It would be a separate few-car lot parking, few cars worth of parking that would be proposed, from what I was understanding on this.
My memory is they were probably the earliest response to the Greenway Committee website saying, we're concerned about having car, bicycle parking on their property.
Okay.
All three of these options that have been explored are to preserve Sheldon's own parking and their access or their egress.
Well, and this third one has no parking on it, and all it does is walk out to the College Highway and up a sidewalk that ends.
And my sense is they are not necessarily going to buy that one.
Yeah, I don't think that has much particular use of it.
If I can briefly bring up the, I think Aaron sent a request to consider decreasing the size of the committee from nine to seven, so we can maintain a quorum easier. I don't know if that, this is the right time, or just at one point, we'd like that on the agenda.
Was it to increase it or decrease it?
To decrease it. We had gone up from eight to nine-
Yeah.
-because eight was a weird number, but we're-
He did send that. We need to put that on the agenda and take it up.
Okay, that's fine.
How many seats are filled right at the moment?
Right now, there's six. And if two people are out, we don't have a quorum. So we've actually done pretty well, but it's concerned, and we have not been able to recruit.
So to reduce it to nine is the request?
No, recruit from nine to seven.
From nine to seven, right, yeah. No, I did get an email on that, sorry. Yeah, we've got a list of things.
Do we need to approve the authorization of funds for KP Law on this, or is it just-
Well, I don't know if we need to wait to figure out what they are yet, or-
Budget is what we have right now, or if we have to.
We've got to see what's left. We've used a lot so far on whether we've got some existing funds, because of a lot of the work we've done through, you know, the housing stuff.
But couldn't we ask, by email, just a question? Do you have an attorney on staff that is considered an expert on whatever Chapter 97 is?
In court, yeah. Yeah, we could certainly do that, yeah.
I need to pull this and any materials together to send to them.
Okay, good. All right. And since people are hearing us talk about Chapter 7, 97, so give a title.
Article 97, the amendments to Massachusetts State Conservation entitles citizens of the Commonwealth to a clean environment. But it also spells out specific protections for land that has been dedicated for conservation. And I think parkland also is under 97, watershed lands by expansion.
So I was going to ask about parklands, because there is, now, maybe this incorporates it, but you can, a municipality can repurpose parkland, but you got to replace it at a two-to-one ratio. There's got to be other conservation land in town that we could take and throw in the mix.
So this is not an absolute dedication in perpetuity, but it recognizes that that's the intent. And it relates to the public use doctrine, prior public use. Care and control is with the Parks Commission or the Conservation Commission, provided that they make a policy determination that the land is surplus, or to that effect.
It could actually be a swap of sorts, yeah.
Following the amendment, Article 97- Following the amendment, Article 97, last year was enacted by the Great General Court, what was colloquial called the no net loss of open space, which spells out the procedures in law and regulation that were formerly just policy at the executive office. And yes, replacement ratios, determinations that there's no other suitable solution for your need.
And all that. Okay.
Concurrent by town meeting, and two-thirds of each chamber of the state legislature.
Okay.
Home rule petition, nobody knows what's going on, they all vote yea, but we need to know what's going on in our Parks and Conservation Commission, because that's a public trust, I would say, that we carry. We've got good laws, the best in the nation, but they're only as good as our vigilance.
That's correct. Yep. Okay. All right. So let's have Scott go ahead and query KP Law and just to ask about someone who's got the experience with Article 97 in particular. Hopefully, they have somebody on staff or they can call in somebody. Yeah. Last one.
As outlined here, parking is hopefully a temporary parking, because ultimately, we're talking about extending to Westfield, and that whatever's built there is going to be as inexpensive possible and being redesigned.
Right. So this would just be a temporary parking is what's being proposed, given the hope that this will extend on down to Westfield.
Which also may affect your thought process.
Yeah.
Whether we build the Lincoln Tunnel or the Brooklyn Bridge.
All right. Very good. Thanks. Well, we'll, obviously, there'll be more meetings on that, and it's good, I know Alex has been very diligent on this at Ty &amp; Bond to keep on top of all this with the powers that be at DOT too. So, very good. All right. Next up, let's see, where are we?
Health agent.
Yeah, health agent update. So Scott?
Thank you for sharing the resume.
Yeah. So we have, we won't actually take that up tonight, but we have a candidate. And just to clarify, we had already signed off at Select Board level on the PRF for a Board of Health health agent, and so that's what allowed them to post that. And they've got a good candidate, and they're working through all that process now at the Board of Health level. I think as the one thing that needs to be modified is just on the actual job description itself, it said health director on it. We just need to change that. I believe if indeed the, I was led to believe that the actual duties and the, all the stuff that's in the job description really will not change, have not changed. And we just need to make that the health agent rather than health director, but that's my understanding. So we technically, I had signed off on this in April, but it still should go to PQB for their final review and sign off too. But I will say that at least we have a viable candidate, which is very encouraging. I was afraid we would go a long time without having someone. So they're working on it from Board of Health aspect on this, and hopefully we will know something more at our May 27th meeting. I'm not sure when PQB meets again, John?
Thursday.
This Thursday? Okay.
There may be a quorum issue, but we'll see.
Okay. All right. Well, hopefully, they can take it up. Good. Okay. Just briefly, 250th anniversary, just a couple of things. We got through the beard contest. Dan's not here, but I can attest to the fact that he is clean-shaven now, and as is Doug Hamel from our Finance Committee. And we had a good time with the seven people that had finally entered.
Appreciate that.
The big winner was Jim Allen, who ended up winning several of the categories. And Keith LeBrie was the one for the shave-off category. And I must say, Ian was a master at managing all this. Our police chief with, he had the paper out there, the big white flip chart paper, and people sat down at their mirror, and they had a razor and shaved off every little whisker, and be sure, they were very sure to scoop up every whisker and put it in a little cup and weigh it. And anyway, Keith LeBrie was the ultimate winner on that one. So...
I heard there was some lead weight involved.
But they all got a 250th pint glass as a prize, so that was good. We ended up canceling the cornhole and Tugawar, there really were no viable teams to show up. They, we didn't have enough entries to do anything with it, so we're going to postpone that till the fall. I think we had so much going on that weekend.
You should think about canoeing in the spring.
There we go. So we'll try and do something in the fall on that. However, the Battle of the Badges did happen, so the police and the fire had their softball game. That went just about an hour and a half, right before the rain, the skies opened up at about four o'clock, and we had a deluge, and they had just finished. And the police won 12 to nine. And everybody was a bit sore, I think I would say. I've heard of a couple hamstring issues since then, but it was good fun. They really did a good job. So there's a bunch of photos out on the website, and it was fun. Our next event up is this, actually this coming Saturday. So in addition to the library book sale, which is normal, and the plant sale from the Women's Club, which is part of our Spring into Southampton weekend, the Hampshire County Church, Hampshire County Church of Christ, I believe, up at the corner at Palm River Meadow and Route 10, the old Opa Opa is how most people know this place, is sponsoring a chili cook-off and a baking contest. And so that is from, I believe, 11 to 1:00. So people are invited, everybody's invited to come, bring some chili to enter at about 10:30. You can bring it that early, enter it in, or just come along and taste, have a good time. So that is being co-sponsored with the committee, the 250th Committee, and that, the Hampshire County HCCC Church, to have a chili cook-off and baking contest. So that's our big event for now. Memorial Day comes up after that, Memorial Day Parade on the 26th, and that's at 9:00, starting at Norah School. And then the next big event for the 21st, we will get some advertising going very soon, but the committee is sponsoring, thanks to some funding also from East Hampton Savings Bank. We are going to be sponsoring a summer concert at Glendale Ridge on June 21st, probably from about 5 to 8 o'clock. We will have a couple food trucks there, and the band will be King Country. So put that on your calendars on June 21st. And that will be our big summer event at the Vineyard. So thanks also to Glendale Ridge for hosting that event. And we will get advertising going very soon on that. So, okay, that's kind of it. Next up, we have a couple PCFs for the Fire Department, I believe.
Motion to approve PCF, Fire Department, Daniel Martin, new hire, paramedic, part-time, as needed, non-benefited, $27 per hour.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Motion to approve PCF, Fire Department, Kevin Dancero, resignation effective April 21st, 2025.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's approved as well. Very good.
Move to approve the minutes of April 8th and April 15th, 2025.
Okay.
Second.
All right. I've got just one small correction. It's just a typo. On April 8th, I believe, oh, hang on a second. Hang on a second. Just on the Memorial Day Parade, Richard Leclerc. It's L-E-C-L-E-R-C. It sounds like Leclerc, but it's not spelled that way. It's L-E-C-L-E-R-C. It's in a couple places on the first page. So with that correction?
The second C is silent.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right. So with that correction?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Both minutes are approved as amended on April 8th. Next, we have some licenses and permits for Conant Park, or actually for, yeah, One Day Wine and Malt.
Motion to take up as a package, One Day Wine and Malt for Joseph Hool, Yankee Candle, Conant Park, Thursday, May 15th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for an annual picnic, and a One Day Wine and Malt for Jeffrey Boulard, Conant Park, Sunday, June 8th, 2025, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. for Hampshire Regional High School graduation party.
Second.
All right. It looks like they've got all their paperwork in order with the Parks Commission and us. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Both of those are approved, and we will sign those tonight. Please don't leave until you sign them, the licenses.
Thank you.
Old businesses, anything on the various old businesses, HMP updates? There should be something happening fairly soon. We haven't heard too much on the Hazard Mitigation Plan finalization. There should be a draft, and I think there's got to be another public meeting on that, is there not? Right?
Yeah. Mimi had some questions last week. We have to go into the Health Department to get with Jerry's retirement. A lot of it has to do with some of that stuff, so.
Okay. All right. ADA door openers, we're hopefully going to get that installed soon?
Next Friday, we're probably going to do it with Dave.
Okay. All right. Stormwater Enterprise Fund, I don't know if there's been any movement on that at all.
No, Ty &amp; Bond's been bugging me for a meeting though, so.
Yeah.
Another town meeting is on me.
Ty &amp; Bond has also been very busy with so many of our other projects in Southampton, I'm sure. Broadband Committee Charge, I did get, I asked them to, the Committee, Tech Committee, to send me a draft of a charge, so they have sent that to me as of last night. So I will take a look at that, and we'll probably see if we can throw that on the agenda for one of our upcoming meetings. If not, this next one in May, we'll do it for the early June one, just to see what we want to do with that. That whole notion of looking at broadband was one of the high priorities of the voters way back when, when we did, actually, it was when we did the Master Plan Update Plan, so probably three years ago now, three or four years ago, that was one of the high priorities, and we haven't really done much except have the municipal light plant votes, which we've done, but now we have to take it to the next step, if we're going to do that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Branching off of that, this is in part because of the imminent departure of our colleague...
We don't know that yet.
Okay.
In terms of, we'll figure that out. Yes.
All right. Well, let me reform my thought and say that the Housing Authority is desperately in need of new blood and volunteers to serve on that.
So along those lines, I was going to ask if at some time in June, for one of the June meetings, if we could have, if somebody could prepare a list, and again, it might be Judy, she might have the master list, of, because usually in July, we get hit with a bunch of, okay, now we got to vote all these positions.
Reappointments and so forth.
Reappointments, you know.
Yeah.
To the best of our knowledge, can we ping the people? Are you interested in reappointment? Identify what's open. By then, we'll know the election will be over. There may be write-ins, but I think Southampton is severely underrepresented on a Hampshire Regional School Committee, and the only way Southampton gets 56% of that vote is to fill the five seats. So...
And we have how many filled then?
Two.
Two.
Plus one from North, because so there's six coming off the Norah School Board, but still.
Yeah. That's unfortunate. Yeah.
Then we can go to work and try and advocate to find people to fill spots.
Yeah. I know Judy's been, she's dealt with a couple committees, I know, that have approached her, saying we've got somebody whose time is up and we want to renew. So I know she's checking with chairs as they come to her attention. So, yeah, we should know that. Sure. Very good. Okay.
In the process for Select Board liaisons, is that a one-on-one?
We'll do that after, excuse me, after the election, and hopefully we have our new member on, as we'll have a new person.
I'm expecting that.
That's, I'll put her name out there to join us, Ellen.
How do you inquire about interests and matchmaking?
Yeah. I think mostly what we've done in the past is first of all, determine, and we probably need to go back through again and see which committees really need a liaison. I mean, I think we, you know, we did a lot. I think we've narrowed it some, and we made it, the person who was already on that particular committee was also de facto the liaison. So we'll find out what, you know, say Ellen, for example, might be interested in, and see what, you know, what makes sense, and if that's a committee that could be helpful.
And whether in light of the election results or lack of results, there needs to be Select Board appointments appropriate.
So some of our liaisons are required by bylaw.
Yeah.
And then some of them are just pure liaison. So I would, you know, my preference would focus on the ones where we're required to be there because of a vote, because we're a voting person, and then the other ones, there's only so much bandwidth.
I know. That's true.
They need the bandwidth.
Sure. Yeah. Yep. Okay. All right. So with that, our next meetings will be May 27th, June 10th, and June 24th.
So on that, I'll just let the chair know, as of right now, unless anything changes, June 10th, I'll be away in New Hampshire for a work meeting.
Okay. And then, Stephen, you told me you'd be gone...
May 20th. It's a warrant.
It's a warrant. Warrant issue. Yeah. It's not a meeting issue, but it's a warrant issue.
You voted early, correct?
Oh, yeah. All right. I'm just... Within the first three hours, early voting was open.
Very good.
Your idea was too late.
Very good. All right. Thanks for that. So with that, I think we have nothing else on the agenda. Scott, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
All those in favor, aye. All right. We are adjourned at 7:10.
There's a lot of stuff to sign here. Pass it down.